Uh, Dr. Benitez, can you hear us online?
So, good evening.
Great, you can hear us?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I will call to order this regular Board of Education meeting on December eighth, and let's rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for being here tonight. Uh, two notes as we enter into public comments. Uh, the first is that, um, if there are board pauses during the public comment, uh, we will make sure, or I will help to make sure, that the three-minute allotment and the sixty-minute allotment is there for public comment. Um, and I'll do my best to navigate that. And also, that, uh, the Teachers' Union has a right to speak on items on the agenda when requested. So the last speaker will be the Union President, and the three-minute time limit will not apply to that. So, welcome to the Board of Education regular meeting. Regular meetings are a time for the Board to conduct its business. As a Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. The Board may hear public participation for up to sixty minutes. Public participation shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. One speaker cannot yield their time to another speaker. There will be no responses this evening to any questions or concerns raised. They will be referred to the Administration for review. As adults, we serve as positive role models for our students. Please be respectful of time. We ask speakers to not make defamatory comments or use abusive or vulgar language. And I will, uh, work with Dr. White to help us manage the time. Uh, Dr. White, are we ready for public comment?
Uh, yes, I will ask that people line up over here so that we can maximize the sixty minutes so that there isn't a lot of time between transitions. So I'll be reading names five at a time. First up, Charles O'Donnell, followed by Teresa Purdy, followed by Jennifer Graves, followed by Xenia Collier, followed by Nadia Huzzar.
Thank you. My name is Charles O'Donnell. I am a teacher at Wilbur Cross High School. I am frustrated, uh, because, adjusting for inflation, my income has dropped by about $2,000 since I started teaching in 2019. I am in my mid-thirties. I am raising young children, and I want to stay teaching in New Haven. I love Wilbur Cross, but I do not know if I can remain here. You consistently ask teachers to sacrifice and to do more with less. This next contract must reflect a serious commitment to financial fairness to ensure that we can afford to stay. My frustration is amplified because while we are asked to operate under extreme scarcity, central office appears to operate under a different budget reality. We see new enviable offices and massive expensive equipment like television screens literally collecting dust in the supervisors' offices for curriculum, waiting to be mounted, while my school lacks a fresh coat of paint and a complete set of ceiling tiles. I hear yet another commitment to release a line item budget, but after repeated unfulfilled promises since I have been working here, my faith is gone. I do not believe you will release an itemized budget. How can you ask us to continue to sacrifice when from our view it appears you are not participating in the same scarcity? Finally, I am frustrated by your skewed spending priorities. I have expertise in science curriculum, for example, and I'm excited because I have been provided an opportunity to participate in writing curriculum, which we do not have a strong established curriculum in New Haven for science. The district rightly wants to invest its own teachers to write our curriculum. I think that is good, but this effort is capped at an insulting hourly wage for only a few short sessions. To be blunt, I make more money dungeon mastering Dungeons and Dragons games at night than I do writing curriculum that will impact thousands of students. This approach cannot produce a usable polished product. We've had two three-hour sessions so far this year, and when do you want me to write this curriculum if you're unwilling to pay? I love it here, but the mismanagement is constant and consistent. I am unsure what the answers are, but I'm not in the position to have all of the information at my fingers. I am asking you to please take seriously our requests to look at our health care. It is not good. Please, take seriously that we are running out of the ability to afford to work here if we are in the stages of life that I find myself in. I cannot survive another ten years to get to top step. It is not tenable. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Purdy, and I'm a teacher at Co-op High School. For the past eight years, I have trained and supported new teachers across New Haven. I'm proud that my colleagues tell our new staff at Co-op, "Purdy's gonna get you through this, don't worry." But no amount of mentoring can fix the reality that we all face. Too many New Haven teachers cannot afford to keep working here. Our salaries are not competitive, and our health care has become unaffordable. Teachers in New Haven earn thousands less than colleagues in nearby towns while also paying more for basic medical care. Lower pay and higher health care create painful inequity that's driving New Haven educators away. Across the district, teachers are skipping doctor visits. They're delaying tests and avoiding specialists because they simply cannot afford it. I have personally spoken with teachers that I work with who have had to forego critical procedures because they simply can't afford the out-of-pocket costs. As a result, some of these coworkers come into work in pain and are also ill. Others have resorted to using credit cards to pay for medical bills, putting themselves and their families at serious risk or worsening health, um, health and financial hardship. These are not isolated cases. They are quiet reality of our schools. When educators cannot afford to stay healthy, everyone loses. Meanwhile, the city has received large rebates from the insurance carriers for years. These rebates never lowered our costs. While the city saves, teachers pay the price through higher deductibles and out-of-pocket expenses. That's not equity. That's an imbalance, and it's an injustice. And add insult to injury, the proposed high deductible health plan for all New Haven teachers would make things worse. Asking teachers to pay $2,000 to $4,000 before insurance even begins, health care coverage is a barrier. No district that values its educators should expect them to take on that kind of financial risk. And there is a better solution. It's been proposed the State Partnership Plan. There's no deductibles, predictable, manageable co-pays, and real access to care without financial fear. Districts across Connecticut have already adopted it, and they're not losing teachers as New Haven continues to lose. This isn't just an employee issue, it's a student issue. As been said many times at prior board meetings I have attended and other functions, teaching conditions are the students' learning conditions. So tonight, I ask the Board to choose equity over imbalance. Choose to support people who show up to New Haven children every day. Choose the State Partnership Plan. Choose recruitment. Choose retention. Choose fairness for the educators who keep coming and running the district. Thank you.
Jenny Graves, Zalia Collier, Leslie Blattow, Nadia Huzzar, Mary Ann Maloney, Anthony Fiore, Rebecca McElson, please line up.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Graves. I've been in the district for sixteen years. I'm Vice President of New Haven Federation of Teachers. Tonight, I want to talk about a reality that every educator in our district is feeling, and every family who relies on special education services is living. Our students' needs are growing at a pace that current staffing and structures simply can't sustain. And without clear caseload caps and a plan for what happens when those caps can't be made, our schools and educators are burning out, they're backlogged, and have service gaps that we just cannot meet. Let me start with our district's own data. In our self-contained classroom, student enrollment is rising sharply, up seventy-eight students between last school year and this school year, with projections that could push more than two hundred beyond where we are today. But staffing has not moved in that. What used to be an eight-to-one student-to-teacher ratio in self-contained classrooms is drifting towards thirteen or even fifteen-to-one. And that is not just a number. That's a teacher trying to support students with intensive needs with half of the adults that classroom truly requires. Resource caseloads are inching up, too. Over three years, we added thousands of service hours, but only two more teachers. Caseloads rose from about nineteen to just about twenty per teacher, and at first glance, that might look manageable. But every special education teacher in this room knows that a resource caseload isn't about headcount. It's about the minutes, the service hours, and the complexity of need. Social workers are seeing the same trend. Their caseloads are up roughly ten percent over the last three years with no new positions to absorb that, that need. Our high school social workers are now averaging about fifty-plus students each at a time when mental health concerns are escalating nationwide. Psychologists are facing the steepest climb. Staffing is down eleven percent while evaluation demands are up six percent. That leaves every psychologist with approximately seventy-four-plus evaluations a year, far beyond what best practice and well into the territory where compliance risk will become inevitable. And speech services tell another part of the story. Students needing speech support rose eleven percent, but staffing stayed flat. The district even had to turn to contractors at levels that are now costing us over $120,000 a contracted speech bath. How can we possibly continue like this? Our proposal builds in flexibility, builds in collaboration, and builds a plan for what happens when staffing falls short. Because right now, without these guardrails, the system is stretching far beyond what is safe, sustainable, and puts the district at increased legal risk. Special education teachers are leaving, related service providers are leaving, and the students with the highest needs are continuing to pay the price. Without these guardrails, the system will further stretch past what is safe. We can choose to be proactive now or reactive later. As a mother of a special education student and as a special education teacher myself, I vote that we become proactive. Thank you.
Good evening to the esteemed members of the Board of Education. My name is Zania Collier, and I'm a history teacher at Co-op Arts and Humanities Magnet High School. I stand before you tonight not just as an employee, but as a mother whose three children were educated and graduated from this district, as a taxpayer, as a New Haven resident, but most importantly, as a dedicated veteran teacher who has poured twenty-two years of professional expertise, loyalty, and heart into the children and families of this city. We, the long-serving educators, are the anchors, the mentors, the counselors, the architects who mold the minds of the next generation. And yet, the unwavering dedication is met with profound disappointment. Our current compensation structure is a public statement that the Board does not truly value our status or our sacrifices. We are asked to do so much with so little. We are overworked, exhausted, required to juggle heavy workloads, fill staffing gaps, meet the increasingly complex needs of our students. We absorb the impossible burden that budget shortfalls create. The ultimate measure of our worth is in our pay. The salary and the company health insurance we receive for years of continuous high-level service is not competitive across the state of Connecticut. When we see our expertise undervalued year after year, it sends a clear corrosive message. The stability, experience, and loyalty of veteran teachers are disposable assets. If you genuinely believe that the teacher is the heart of the educational system, then your actions must align with your words. Stop declaring our worth in mission statements and start demonstrating it in our contracts. Invest in us, not just because it is fair, but because investing in a veteran teacher is the single most critical investment you can make in the future of our students, this community, and our society. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Blattow. I'm the President of New Haven Federation of Teachers, a city resident, and a public school mom here in New Haven. And I just want to highlight that this room is filled with students, parents, grandparents, elected officials, New Haven public school graduates, hard-working union members from across sectors in this city. And it's because we care about our kids and we care about our schools. NHFT in particular is committed to the ongoing work of fighting for the school funding that the residents of our city need. Our commitment is clear and unwavering. The funding school formula at the state level, we can all agree, is outdated, racist, and classist, and must be improved. Our collaboration with New Haven Public Schools, Dr. Negron, Mayor Ellicker on this issue, will continue. And we hope to see more unions, more leaders, and more elected officials engage in this work in Hartford. But with that said, our focus tonight at this Board of Ed meeting is the city's finances and how we can work together to ensure that we do everything we can to provide our students with the world-class schools they deserve. So the good news is, the city's fund balance is growing. Some have even said publicly that New Haven is booming. In fiscal year twenty-one, the fund balance was 17.8 million. By the end of twenty-four, it has grown to 58.8 million. Revenue is increasing. Fiscal year twenty-one, 602.5 million. Fiscal year twenty-four, 742.1 million. Almost $140 million increase. So yes, as a result of this, the city's contributions to the Board of Ed have increased. That is a good thing. And Mayor Ellicker and the Board of Alders, many of whom are here tonight, should get the credit for that. But we must also note that education continues to make up a shrinking share of expenditures. Fiscal year twenty-one, thirty-nine point one percent. Fiscal year twenty-four, thirty-five point four percent. So what does this mean for a fair contract for our teachers? It means a shift to the sustainable and affordable health insurance, state health insurance plan is possible. The bottom line is, from the city's own health care consultant, what we spend today on health care, forty point eight million for four-tiered plans we don't like. What the State Partnership Plan would cost today, forty-one point one million dollars. Practically the same cost. What does this mean for our cities? That we can deliver salaries that not only honor our work, but our years-long commitment to this city. Our salaries and our hourly wages for the additional work that we do must be commensurate with neighboring districts. It means that our union's commitment to delivering more support for students by lowering class size and re-establishing caseload caps, it's possible. We come together every day to do Herculean work in this city in understaffed, under-resourced, and under-maintained classrooms. We bring joy, creativity, and commitment, and we are looking to our city leaders, to our Board of Ed leaders, to give us the tools, the respect, and the support we need to do the incredible work that these folks do every day. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nadia Hafizova. I work at ISAM as a social studies teacher. And aside from being concerned that working in this district is becoming financially irresponsible, what I'd like to talk about is academic freedom. And I really want the Board of Ed to codify this as a right and not a policy. Now is the time to take brave action and protect this right. For context, I will share my family history. I was born in Russia, a country in which civic society... Can you hear me? Yes, sorry. I was born in Russia, a country in which civic society is severely limited. My father is Tatar, a Muslim ethnicity. During the Russian Revolution, not only was there a high ideological zeal, but also a sense of lawlessness due to the civil war. In my region's Tatar villages, revolutionaries came and confiscated items for the revolutionary cause who frequently pocketed more than what was sanctioned for their own personal gain and fulfillment of their debtors. A neighboring village protested, and the revolutionaries rounded up all the Tatars, including my great-grandfather Sayet Sakalov and his brother Jalali Dine, and father Nishma Dine took court, where the bench was stained with blood from executions. They were met with the butts of rifles in their backs and screams of "We will drink your blood." Sayet's brother and father were shot, but Sayet survived because he was a teacher, and they viewed him as a fighter for freedom and not a counter-revolutionary. When they were digging the mass graves, they lined everyone up for another execution, and he survived once more because he played the violin at the lead executioner's wedding. I know these details because in 1919, Sayet published an account of his experience in the local newspaper. In his words, I must write... These are his exact words. "I must write all of this out because I cannot stay quiet, not saying the truth that must prevail. As a result, I also think that for everything that I have written, serious attention will be paid." And he was right. In the 1930s, when the Stalinist purges of dissidents occurred, this newspaper article was brought up to the local council, and he was shot when his daughter, my paternal grandmother, was two years old. And now, I know Sayet's exact words because my grandfather Mansur Rafiev was a professor of history and saved all of these documents in the hope of a day where there could be academic freedom. To critique power was to paint a target. When the Soviet Union fell, he published Tragedy in a Tatar village. When I asked my father how Mansur could work as a university historian supporting the party line, my father summarized it as a practice of self-denial out of self-preservation. And so, as an American, I will not self-denial. I fundamentally disagree with your lack of prioritization of academic freedom as a working conditions issue. You do talk about having a committee, but that is not enough. It is mandatory to ensure that our high school graduates are ready to engage in a pluralistic society. It is mandatory to safeguard educators from retribution when leadership changes. Denying teachers' legal protections when speaking on the undesirable histories the current administration wants to suffocate is unfortunately naive. Do not sleep on this administration. You may say, "We're not Soviet Russia." And I say, "Let's preserve that fact. Let's reinforce our legal responsibility to protect our freedom of speech." A policy is a preference, and I need it to be a right.
Mary Ann Maloney, then Rebecca McElson, Kim Rogers, Christine McCloskey, and Marcy Thomasack, please get ready.
All right. Good evening, Board. I'm Anthony Fiore. I was a student in New Haven for ten years. I worked in a high school for a year, and I served on the Board for two years. And that time in New Haven has been a blessing. That is due to the amazing teachers that supported me throughout all of these years in New Haven. These teachers and staff are the reason why I went to college. These teachers are the ones who made me feel important enough to try. And they're the ones that I can still rely on, still go back to, despite being outside of college, uh, outside of high school now. I can still text them and ask for advice, which I often do. Despite their amazing work, they are forced to work under conditions no one should, not for the job that they do. They suffer from leaky ceilings, non-competitive pay, a lack of communication, and much, much more. This is why New Haven is losing their very best. We all know that New Haven does not offer a competitive salary, competitive position. And because of that, New Haven as a whole is suffering. Our teachers are tired, and they know that they are undervalued. But New Haven values our teachers. We all know that they need more to do the jobs. New Haven needs the Board. Sorry. And we all know that New Haven teachers need more to do the jobs that we need them to do. New Haven needs the Board to do what they should be doing, which is supporting the teachers. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Maloney. I teach eleventh and twelfth grade math at New Haven Academy. I am also chief steward of the New Haven Teachers' Union. I have been chief steward for twenty years. I have negotiated every contract during that twenty-year period. Historically, parties have come to the table with the intention of building a contract that would allow teachers to serve our children effectively and also to maintain a decent standard of living for their families, reflective of their education, their effort, and their dedication. At the last contract negotiations, that changed. Although an equitable agreement was reached, little or none of those benefits would ever reach our members. I am one of the lucky ones. With twenty-six years of service in New Haven and a J.D. degree, I saw a $17.50 raise. Not quite enough to cover the increased cost of food and gas, but much better than many of my younger colleagues who saw no increase at all over the last three years. In fact, many saw a decrease in their salaries. As the Board of Education, you oversee all of the... As the Board of Education, you oversee all of the operations and assets of the New Haven Public Schools. You are currently well-aware, as is every teacher, that the state of Connecticut has named us a failing school district. For many years, your response to this crisis, and it is a crisis, especially for the 1,728 students who currently have no teacher, some of whom are the same students who had no teacher last year either. Again, your response has been to direct funding, to expanding the administrative ranks, to the purchase of very expensive curriculum and software and to balance the budget on the backs of the only assets who have the power and the expertise to make a real difference, your teachers. HR has become a revolving door, not because they're not hiring good people, but because those people quickly learn that caseloads, schedules and class sizes make it impossible for them to do the job that they were hired to do. They voted with their feet, trading a drive as short as 15 minutes for significantly more money, clean and healthy facilities and manageable class sizes and caseloads. HR complains about having to hire in at the top of scale. Please note, they are not filling new positions. They're replacing teachers who chose New Haven and who would have been happy to stay. NHFT does not pretend to have all the answers to fix our current decline, but our proposals address the most fundamental concerns directly impacting instruction. Please honor all of our proposals and listen to the voices of those who are face-to-face with our children every day, your teachers. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Michelson. I teach at Dr. Mayo Early Childhood School. I teach art there. I'm in my 16th year in New Haven and I don't even think I'm halfway done. So I intend to stick around. But regarding our contract, I want to start with class size, reiterating caps for special ed classes. Student-to-teacher ratios aren't the only issue. There's a critical mass of people that can be in a room that our most high-support needs students can handle. And we know that those who balk at the cost of caring for these people are going down an ideological path best left to history. And in general, treating the education of our students as something from which to primarily gain fiscal returns and for whom, we are ignoring the ultimate reason to educate. Economic returns are often better distributed with an educated populace, but just being better educated is the gain. We spend the money now to save lives later. Improved education can yield peace, compassion, happiness, thriving endeavors, communities, better physical and mental health, art, activity, equality and equity, problem-solving skills. A thorough education can help people understand themselves and each other. How many social ills would be prevented if that's where we started? The gains we can achieve with this contract will radiate beyond the school walls if only we have the patience and fortitude to allow it to happen with time and resources we're asking for. These won't yield instant gratification, but while this contract might intimidate some, it is merely an ounce of prevention to mitigate the ever-increasing need for tons and tons of cure.
Coming up after Rogers is Christine Morsky, Marcy Thomaswick, Erin Mashawn, Henry Garcia, Lauren Cunningham.
Good evening. My name is Kim Rogers. I speak tonight on behalf of the hard-working teachers of New Haven Federation of Teachers Local 933 and as a taxpayer here in New Haven. I am here to ask, no, urge, maybe beg you to come to the table Tuesday, December 9th, prepare to agree on the state of Connecticut health plan option and a fair raise for New Haven teachers. Time is of the essence. Far too much of it has already been lost because of lack of preparation on the city's side. As teachers, we know the value of preparation. It is the foundation of everything we do. Every day, we come to work ready, having done our homework, checked our facts and planned thoroughly so students can succeed. We expect the same professionalism and diligence from those who employ us and make decisions that affect the classroom, our families and our communities and our future. We have done our part. We have shown up. We have taught through the challenges. We have stood by our students and our community through every change and crisis. We need you to do your part. The community stands with us. The teachers are united and the time for delay is over. Come to the table, ready to finalize the agreement, one that provides fair compensation and reasonable health coverage for the educators who make this district work every single day. Do your homework, come prepared and let's move forward now. Do your job. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christine Morsky. I'm a special education teacher with 23 years of experience, the last 10 in New Haven at Truman School. I am also a resident of Beaver Hills Section of New Haven, a proud parent of a graduate and of a child who I had to remove from New Haven Public Schools to be able to get her the services she needs. I know the realities of our special education services in New Haven as a teacher and as a parent. Given my child's need, I am also well-acquainted with the limits of our current healthcare options. I am here today to share my story in hopes that it will provide clarity on the need for caseload limits for special education providers and for an affordable healthcare option for our teachers. My youngest child was academically advanced and did well in elementary school. However, when she hit middle school, she began to struggle significantly with peer relationships, engagement and following rules expectations. We worked with outside providers to address her needs and requested support in school. Trying to fight for services for her was awkward for me as I understood all too well the realities that staff in her school were facing. The case managers in my school are currently expected to cover 934.5 minutes and 977 minutes of legally mandated service hours in a 280-minute day, as well as cover 1,190 minutes of unmet legal requirement due to a vacancy. These caseloads leave us unable to effectively service our most vulnerable students and allows no time to collaborate or provide suggestions to classroom teachers for struggling students. I made multiple requests for my daughter to be discussed in Triple S.T. or to be seen by the school counselor with no success. I 100% believe that this was due to limited time by providers at her school and her not yet being considered the highest priority. Our schools must be staffed to adequately service all of our vulnerable students. After being put up for expulsion and hospitalized as a result of her peer struggles, I moved her to a neighboring district through open choice. She was finally able to get a 504 and then an IEP to address the underlying developmental and emotional struggles she faces and has since been outplaced to a therapeutic boarding school to address her significant needs. We need special education caseload caps so that students like my child can be responsibly cared for and educated. The process to get my daughter there highlights the need for affordable healthcare options for our teachers. Our current plan requires teachers to pay the first $4,000 of medical care out of pocket and then pay a percentage of cost until the out-of-pocket max is reached. Given the intense needs of my daughter, this has meant that I've had to pay close to $10,000 out of pocket each year in the first month of our coverage year, July. This July, my daughter was hospitalized and then transitioned to her fifth residential treatment center. To even be approved for the transfer, I had to pay the $4,000 deductible to the RTC as the hospital had not yet billed insurance. As soon as she was discharged, I had to pay the charges for the hospital. Additional charges for the residential treatment center quickly added up once they exceeded the $4,000 down payment, which was within a few days. In total, my out-of-pocket in the month of July was well over $10,000. The structure of our current plan with enormous upfront costs is not feasible for teachers. Teachers should not need to decide between getting the care they need or paying their bills in current medical debt. Had we been on the union's proposed plan, there would have been no deductible to meet, a hospital copay of zero, as well as a residential mental health inpatient copay of zero, saving me thousands of upfront costs. The state partnership plan would allow for more stable, consistent, predictable costs for teachers.
Hello, my name is Marcy Thomaswick. I've been teaching for 27 years. I have two masters, one was earned in 2004, one in 2019. I have a cross endorsement that I earned in 2022 in remedial reading, remedial language arts. And I'm just telling you this because it demonstrates how much I love teaching and learning. This was my sixth year in New Haven. I spent three years at Brennan Rogers and this was my third year at Salentano. I was right-sized out of Brennan Rogers when they went from two classes per grade to one. I have also availed myself of many of the continuing education opportunities that New Haven provides. I participated in multiple anti-racist teaching initiatives. I participated last spring in organizing for schools our students and communities deserves. I availed myself of science PD at the Peabody Museum. And I asked for a transfer this year. In our current contract, the language says voluntary transfers or involuntary transfers. There are current openings in New Haven Public Schools that fall under my credentials, my degrees. However, I was not allowed or permitted to transfer. Due to the fact, when I learned that, I resigned. My last day in New Haven was on Friday. I'm on your agenda for resignations and retirements. I had to put my own safety, well-being and mental health as a priority because no one else will. This is the first time in 27 years of teaching that I left a position mid-year. It was a very challenging decision. And I wish that I had other options that would have allowed me to stay in New Haven as I am a dedicated professional. I love teaching and learning. I care for my colleagues, my students and everybody I've had the benefit of working with in New Haven. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for your service. My name is Erin Mashad and I'm a proud co-op teacher and a proud veteran New Haven educator of 25 years. I'm here tonight because New Haven educators deserve a fair contract and affordable health insurance that acknowledges the real economic pressures we are facing. When I started teaching full-time in New Haven in 2000, my salary was just over $26,000 a year. At that time, medical benefits for teachers were only available for employees. There were no spousal or family benefits for new hires. It took me 23 years to reach max pay. 23 years of step freezes, salary freezes and even being pushed backwards on the scale. I watched peers in neighboring towns make max step in 12, 14, 17 years. I watched peers moved into our district jump ahead of me on the salary scale. Those years of being frozen didn't just hurt my paycheck. They affected my retirement and the stability of my family. And still, I stay because I love New Haven. Even now, at max, I'm taking home less money this year than I did last year because of huge increases in health insurance costs. My salary went up slightly this year, but my pay went down. Not because I'm working less, I'm working harder than ever, but because medical insurance costs went up. Last week, I discovered a prescription copay that used to cost me $75 every three months. Now suddenly costs 680 for that same period under our insurance plan. My prescription is exactly the same. Anthem has given no explanation for the change even after my inquiries. My doctor is currently scrambling to find a way for me to pay less. Meanwhile, everything around us is getting more expensive. Groceries cost more, gas costs more. The cost of living has surged with inflation. Property taxes in many communities across Connecticut have gone up, adding even more pressure to educators who are already stretched thin. We're doing everything we can to keep up with rising costs, but the district is pushing us backwards. No teacher should lose income simply because they need healthcare. No teacher should have to choose between paying their bills and seeing a doctor. No teacher should be punished financially in a year when every basic necessity costs more. We aren't asking for special treatment, we're asking for fairness. We're asking the district to come back to the table and negotiate medical benefits honestly and in good faith, period. We're asking for a contract that reflects the economic reality we're all living in. We're asking for leadership that understands that strong schools require investing in the people who make them run. We show up every single day for our students. I have shown up for over 25 years. We go above and beyond. We deserve a contract and a district that shows up for us. Thank you.
Coming up behind Laura Cunningham, Kimberly Smart, Gaffet Gonzalez, Melissa Izai, Kelly Higway. Please start lining up.
Good evening, Mayor Elicker, Superintendent Negron and members of the Board. My name is Henry Garcia and I'm a second-year student at Yale Law School. I'm also a member of the Law School Organizing Committee for Unite Here Local 33, the Graduate Student Workers Union at Yale. Before coming to law school, I spent seven years as a public school teacher in the Los Angeles Unified School District. During that time, I was an active member of my teachers' union, United Teachers Los Angeles, and I participated in both the 2019 and 2023 teacher strikes. I worked alongside my colleagues to organize educators and community members, advocating not only for better working conditions, but also for stronger supports for students and their families. That work showed me firsthand how deeply connected teachers' needs are to the well-being of the entire school community. Board members, I'm here tonight to urge you to settle a fair and strong contract for your teachers. They deserve quality healthcare, adequate staffing, sufficient supplies and fully-funded schools. These are not luxuries. They are necessities for creating environments where students can learn, grow and thrive. My experience in LEUSD taught me a simple truth. Teachers' working conditions are directly our students' learning conditions. When teachers are supported, students succeed. When teachers are stretched too thin, our children feel it in the classroom. Supporting teachers and supporting students are not competing priorities. There are two sides of the same coin. It is also important to recognize that New Haven teachers are not standing alone. Graduate Student Workers at Yale and many other labor unions are standing in solidarity with them. Investing in your teachers is investing in your students, your schools and your community. By valuing the adults who dedicate their lives to educating our children, we create the conditions for every child in this district to succeed. Thank you for your time and your commitments to ensuring that every teacher, student and family in this district has what they need to thrive. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Cunningham and I am a second-year special education teacher at ESUMS. I want to give testimony on why it's so important to significantly increase first-year teacher salaries in addition to us having the state partnership health insurance plan. In my mid-30s, I decided to become a teacher for the same wonderful reasons that so many of us in this room entered the profession. My starting salary as a first-year teacher with two master's degrees was $54,000, which translates to under $3,000 a month in take-home pay. And this year, like so many others shared, my monthly take-home is even less due to rising costs associated with our current health insurance plan. I want the Board to understand on practical terms what the starting salary is like for new teachers and how it is insufficient, especially when paired with the upfront costs associated with the HSA plan. Acknowledging that teachers with a bachelor's or even one master's degree are in an even worse financial position than myself. Due to health issues, I paid nearly $1,500 out of pocket in the first few months of the school year. That's my first year of teaching. With the cost of rent, a car payment, groceries and other bills, I went into medical debt. On the current HSA plan, every 90 days, I spend roughly $130 on prescriptions. So even with HSA deposits from the city, it feels like I don't have any health insurance coverage until I meet my deductible. Now, as a result, I am less likely to seek medical care unless it is absolutely necessary. These health insurance costs are incredibly burdensome for those of us in a lower salary step and it's completely demoralizing when you don't see your annual raise reflected in your paycheck because of insurance premium deductions. I have looked closely at the state partnership plan and my out-of-pocket costs would go from thousands of dollars to zero. I have sat in on negotiations and I know that the city can afford this plan. At 35 years old, I am barely financially independent. I'm unable to save for the future and I cannot afford to start a family. This past summer, I received a recruitment email from Hartford Public Schools advertising a starting salary of $62,000 for just first-year teachers. advertising a starting salary of $62,000 for just first year teachers with a bachelor's degree and $70,000 for first year teachers with a master's. Additionally, they are offering a considerable sign on bonus for high need areas such as special education. For me, this would mean an annual salary difference of about $15,000. While I am currently choosing to stay in NHPS because I love my students and my colleagues, it will be harder each year for me to say no to those recruitment emails. You are losing talented, dedicated teachers, especially those in their early careers, because we see that we will be better compensated in neighboring districts. You continue to lose us unless you dramatically improve our salaries and give us truly affordable healthcare, as well as saying yes to our proposals that would alleviate some of the mental costs associated with our jobs. Thank you.
Kimberly Smart, Jafet Gonzalez, Melissa Izari, Kelly Hebrink, Jess Corbett, and Ben Scudder. Kimberly Smart.
Hello. My name is Kimberly Smart of New Haven, Connecticut. I'm a proud special education teacher at Betsy Ross Arts Design Academy and the NHFT Local 933 member. I'm also a product of New Haven Public School System. I never even considered teaching somewhere else. I love my job. From the students, my colleagues, and lesson planning, teaching is all I ever wanted to do, even as a child. I was the one who made my friends play school after school. I was the one following teachers around and begging to make copies. Teaching is not just my profession, it's a part of my identity. Although I love being a teacher, it isn't well without challenges in the best of circumstances. New Haven has faced chronic underfunding. We have many classes with no teacher but with a substitute for the entire school year. I am often called to fill extra rows, roles, cover extra classes, and my students don't get my full focus. When I finally received a class of my own, I never considered the unfortunate circumstances that would come along with it. Circumstances such as not seeing my step pay because it was taken by health insurance policies, a high deductible, and no coverage on certain basic needs. The step payment schedule was also disproportionately unfair because most don't even see the pay increase from year to year. My heart belongs in New Haven, but it's become more and more difficult financially. The number of students in our classroom can reach up to 27. There aren't even always enough seats for all the students. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that fantastic teachers are leaving the district from neighboring towns for these very reasons. As teachers, we do a lot. We go way past our allotted times to work. Whether it be grading, developing lesson plans, hosting after school clubs, covering classes, and daily duties. Why shouldn't we be rightly compensated? The union is asking for the Connecticut Partnership Plan for Health Insurance, which makes the health insurance more affordable, as well as a deserved pay increase, which is what we deserve, to say the least. So I say to the board event, are you going to give us what is rightly earned?
Testing? Okay. My name is Jafet Gonzalez. You have all seen my face before and you have all heard my voice. You won't stop seeing my face or hearing my voice until the proper justice towards our students and teachers is served. What does proper justice look like? Justice looks like making sure students have quality teachers. To this, we need to be paying teachers what they deserve, for what they go through, for what they work for, for the extra hours of work they do without pay, putting in times into attending meetings like these and plenty of others. Justice looks like listening to our teachers when they propose a fair contract, not only to themselves, for themselves, but also students and acting on it. What justice looks like is lowering class sizes, which I know personally needs to happen. Fixing working environments and treating our teachers fairly. If these things were met, me and all my peers would experience a much better form of education. My peers and I are the ones who understand the most on how much these unresolved issues hurt us. If you want these teachers to stay where they are, don't abandon them. Teachers are the foundation of our education system. They have been the best support to me and my peers and to all students in NHPS. Teachers are the reasons I'll graduate in six months. Teachers are the reason we know the knowledge we know. Teachers are the reason I am who I am. Teachers are the reason I am here today and teachers will forever be the reason us students get to where we will be in our future. Teachers at HSE are the closest I've been in my life to having a supportive adult figure who cares about my future and accept me for who I am. Yes, 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 yes. Every teacher, even if my connection isn't that close with them, still smiles at me and loves me unconditionally for what I do, for who I am. And that by itself is something so rare that no one should ever take for granted. So please listen to these words. Please listen to me when I say I want our teachers to stay. So make them want to stay and treat them how they deserve to be treated. Teachers' working conditions are students' learning conditions. Don't ever forget that.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Yeti and I'm a teacher at Morrow Sheridan School. Um, and I want to speak tonight about a concern that has come up repeatedly during our contract negotiations. Um, the idea that our salary and other proposals are too expensive or that this year, like every year, money will be tight. In our last negotiation session, the board mentioned that we are hiring teachers at the top step. This was stated directly by the Board of Education's attorney that our proposals cost too much money because of your hiring practices. If that is the case, you must see that this is a retention problem. The district is spending more money every year hiring new people at the highest step because we are not keeping the teachers that we already have. When experienced teachers leave because of low pay, poor working conditions, or lack of support, the district ends up replacing them with people who cost us even more. So when we're told that our proposals are too expensive, I think it's important to say this clearly. Teachers are not driving these costs, turnover is. Their turnover is fixable. It's the district, if the district invested in retaining our educators by paying them fairly, supporting them, and giving them the resources that they need, we wouldn't be repeatedly filling vacancies with top step hires. Retention is not only better for students, it's financially responsible. We have already made concessions at the bargaining table. We removed our hazard pay proposal, even though many of us are working in buildings with leaking roofs, extreme temperatures, mold, poor air quality, and chronic maintenance issues. Our students are learning in these same conditions. So if we are not asking for hazard pay for working in unsafe, unhealthy buildings, the very least the district can do is offer us fair, affordable wages. On top of working in these buildings, the board has proposed that all of our bargaining unit goes to the high deductible health insurance plan and refuses to entertain the state partnership plan, which is more consistent and affordable. This health insurance plan is only more affordable to the city because the rebates that have been recently disclosed to us, the rebates where the city has been benefiting financially off of our backs. Teachers, teachers are not the reason the district is struggling financially. Teachers are the reason that the schools are opening every morning. We are the one part of the system that constantly shows up and consistently shows up. If the district wants to reduce costs, improve outcomes, and stop losing educators to surrounding towns, the answer is simple. Retain the teachers that you have. That starts with a contract that reflects our value, respects our profession, and stops blaming us for a budget problem we did not create. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Hebrink and I'm a teacher of multilingual learners at Roberto Clemente. This is my sixth year teaching in New Haven. Teaching was a career change for me. After 12 years working with refugees at the nonprofit Iris, I decided to work with immigrants in a different setting. I'm here to ask for a contract that respects the professionalism and expertise of teachers through salary increases, a robust health insurance plan that won't eat into the salary increases we do receive, and improvements to our working conditions, including a cap to the caseloads for ML and SPED teachers. I certainly didn't go into education for the money. And yet, like all teachers, I deserve a salary that better values and respects my work. Although I switched careers at the age of 38 and it came with extremely relevant skills and experience, I still had to start at the first step as if I was just out of college. I could get a job in a different district that pays more, but my heart lies with students in my beloved New Haven. I especially love helping newcomers from all over the world on their journey to educational and professional success. While teachers at the middle school and high school level have a limit on how many different subjects they have to prep for, SPED and ML teachers currently have no such limits. In past years, I had to teach 80 students across five different grades. This made it impossible to adhere to best practices for teaching newcomers. I had to prepare for classes ranging from kindergartners who were hearing English for the first time to third graders from Afghanistan who had never been to school before and who didn't have literacy in their native language, to fourth graders who had been learning here for many years but needed targeted help to advance their reading and writing. This year, we had a third ML teacher join us at Clemente. It enables us to see our students more often and develop deeper relationships and more robust teaching and learning when our caseload is 40 or 50 rather than 80 students. I'm requesting that the same be implemented across the district through caseload caps in our contract for teachers working with students with such high needs. Our students deserve not just minimal or adequate, but excellent instruction. Please prioritize people in our district. The people doing the daily frontline work of developing relationships with students and teaching them. Technology can't replace this. What moves the needle is compassionate teachers who give students lots of practice, lots of opportunities to practice English, and engage them in hands-on lessons that excite them. Please respect the professionalism of our teachers, those who choose to be here and to stay here, and provide us with a contract that meets our needs and the needs of our students. Thank you.
Yikes. Good evening. My name is Jess Corbett. I live at 359 Norton Street in New Haven. I'm the president of the Western Connecticut Area Labor Federation, a member of Unite Here Local 34, and I organize with New Haven Rising. But today I'll be reading a testimony written by my little sister Jamie, who is home tonight with a sick child and could not attend. My name is Jamie Schmidt. I live at 616 Wintebank Avenue. I'm the mother of an autistic five-year-old that I enrolled in kindergarten this year. Previously to enrolling him in New Haven Public Schools, he was in ABA therapy, which he benefited greatly from. He is the type of kid that needs structure, routine, and a more one-on-one setting. He is non-verbal and not potty trained and elopes. He has high support needs and benefits from one-on-one learning. He is currently in a special education classroom with 14 students. This is nothing against the teachers, aides, or paras. They are doing their best. But there is no way they are able to teach and meet all of these children's needs. My son is not being challenged. He is not learning new things. He is simply being maintained. These teachers can't do their jobs in a classroom when the classroom exceeds their limitations. My son uses an AAC device to communicate and it's on me, without help, to teach him new things while he's at home or at least using exercises he already knows from ABA therapy so he doesn't regress. These kids are being left behind because there's no budget to lessen the classroom sizes and hire more aides and paras. I understand that this is not just a special education issue, it's an issue all around. We are doing these children a disservice by enrolling them in a school system with no budget. We are doing our teachers a disservice by not giving them the tools they need to teach these kids when they're spending more time with them in a day than their parents are. It is heartless. And this is me, not my sister, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say that there's no reason for any school to want for resources or teachers to get a great contract in the same city as an educational institution sitting on a $44 billion endowment. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board of Ed. My name is Ben Scudder. I live in New Haven and teach at high school in the community. I'd first like to say how proud I am of my current students and former students, Jafet and Anthony. I would also like to start by making a request that I've made every time I've testified here, which is this, that you open up testimony for response. Uh, I would love for this to be a dialogue and all of this to be something that can be more collaborative. Uh, but to do that, we need to be able to hear from you. If I say something you disagree with or you think is patently false, I would love for you to be able to tell me why. I, we want to have discussion, we want to have dialogue. Other boards in the city do that. I would implore you to do the same. I'm not going to repeat everything that was said tonight. You know what we're asking for: affordable health insurance, reasonable salaries, lower class sizes. We want to recruit amazing teachers and keep the amazing ones we already have. I know that the state of Connecticut is not doing its part. I've heard many of you talk about this many times and I agree. I've gone to Hartford. I've called and emailed the governor. He's yet to get back to me. But I'll keep doing it. What strikes me is that we've all acknowledged that the state isn't chipping in enough money for our schools and it seems like we've come to two different places on that. On one hand, we can complain about that and keep blaming them and asking for our money and we should, but on the other hand, we've got to make up that difference at some point. Our kids don't know the difference between a dollar from the state and a dollar from the city, except except that it means they have an empty classroom, a leaky roof, a class of 27 kids. So I'm asking you to please give teachers in New Haven a contract that makes us want to stay. Because we love New Haven. We're here because we love New Haven, just as all of you love New Haven. Are you serving this board? I hope because you love New Haven and love New Haven schools is what we're all really here for. But we can't stay if we can't afford health insurance, if our salaries are thousands of dollars less than surrounding districts, if our classes are presenting us with unreasonable demands. We want to be able to serve our students. That's why we do this job. It's certainly not for the money. I'll end with this final thought for you. There have been some truly heartbreaking stories shared tonight. And for some people here, this may be the first time they've heard them, people in the audience, people on the board. Many of those stories have been shared throughout the course of our negotiations. We've been saying this for months and we're asking you now, with a week left before we go to arbitration, to hear these stories and give us a fair contract. Thank you.
Dr. President, that concludes all speakers and the 60 minutes of public comment.
Thank you, Dr. White. And Ms. Bledsoe is coming. Thank you.
Um, thank you. So per our contract, uh, NHFT is able to speak on items on the agenda. I wanted to take my three minutes and I want to just take a few minutes about one item on the agenda tonight. So I wanted to speak on a specific agenda item tonight and urge the board to pause and hopefully reconsider your approval of the data sharing agreement with Varsity Tutors at Hill Central and East Rock School. I apologize that I flagged this more recently and not an F and O. I'll own that. We've been busy. Um, but I did note it and I, that's why I'm asking you to at least pause this. So you will hear that this doesn't cost anything. Um, so that's alluring, of course. Like so much of the testimony today has been rooted in issues around dollars and cents. Um, so I'm not here to complain about this or raise concerns about this agreement because of a financial cost. Um, I am here to raise concerns about this agreement because of other potential costs. So first, I just want to name, and I think we can all agree, that it is an incredibly challenging time right now to be a young person. Um, we know that mental health concerns continue to rise and even at a faster rate in the state of Connecticut relative to the rest of the country. We had a roundtable at Fairhaven School with Congresswoman Delaro a few months ago on this exact topic. Can also, when we look to the research, that yes, of course, the pandemic is a big part of this. But many researchers are highlighting that the the mental health concerns began before the pandemic and potentially intersect with the increase of children's the pandemic and potentially intersect with the increase of children's use of smartphones and overreliance on technology. So, and I think we agree here that that's a concern, so much so that I was proud to stand with Mayor Ellicker and Dr. Negron and the team when we rolled out yonder pouches. Some people of the commentary complained and said it's a distraction. We shouldn't be spending the money on it. Some students complained. We shouldn't be spending the money on it. N H F T stood side by side, saying the pouches are a good thing. We want to remove the distractions for the sake of our children's well-being and what we know is developmentally appropriate. So we worked collectively to address that problem. But now I'm worried we're sending mixed messages to our children about screen time and about what they should be doing when it comes to socializing and engaging in healthy, developmentally appropriate programs and opportunities. So the reality is A I is uncharted territory. We can agree on that. We have worked collaboratively with Assistant Superintendent Red Hannan's with the A I Committee. So, you know, I have some concerns, and many of our members are eager to figure out ways that we can use A I safely in the classroom. All right, so I will acknowledge that collaboration, but still say, A I is uncharted territory, and we must tread lightly. So it was reassuring, somewhat reassuring, to hear that this proposed data sharing agreement will not impact during the school day, teaching and learning, that this is for after-school opportunity for children at Hill Central and East Rock to log on after school and use these programs. But again, I would argue we should be ensuring that our students are spending more time outside, doing art, music, dance, world language exploration, you name it, not just sitting on screens using an A I program. Also want to raise some concerns about the data sharing. Have we contacted the parents? It's a rhetorical question, because I know the answer to it. Have we contacted the parents of the children at Hill Central and East Rock? We have not. I'm a mom at Hill Central, and I'm here as N H F T president, but that is very worrisome that my daughter, a fifth grader, who I got to wrestle to get off the screens, is going to say, "But school told me. School told me to do it. School told me to jump on this." She's on screens plenty, and I don't think we need another school endorse screen opportunity. Again, that is A I. Lastly, one group that I have tremendous respect for, for their ongoing organizing and their reminding to us of climate implications if we don't act right now is the New Haven Climate Movement. They are incredibly organized, and they remind us as the adults in the room that we shouldn't just be thinking about the present. We must think about the future. And I know there are significant concerns related to the climate crisis when we think about how much energy, water, electricity the A I is using. So I think if we're... I think the theory is we'll engage in this because it's free, and it could maybe improve test scores, and it could help kids. But I think we have to, as the educated leaders of the city, we have to think beyond the immediate solution of the immediate test scores and the free gimme-gimme from a company. What are they benefiting? I think ultimately, we can do better for our kids. We can do better for the planet. We can do better for what we know is developmentally appropriate, and it's not sending kids home to sit on screens more and to engage with bots that we don't even know what the outcome is. So I invite you to at least pause. Let's get some parents to the table. Let's get some seventh and eighth graders to the table. Let's see what they want to do after school to help improve test scores. And we know that ultimately, what does improve test scores? Making sure parents have jobs with living wages, making sure that we have access to mental health support, and making sure that students develop the... They could develop themselves as the whole child. When in doubt, bring it back to Comer. I'm not sure that Varsity Tutors understands how to meet the needs of the whole child. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mayor Ellicker.
Last meeting, you gave Dr. Joyner an opportunity for point of personal privilege. Can I have a point of personal privilege, please?
Yes.
A lot of things were said tonight, and I don't doubt people are very, very passionate and deeply care about our schools. And I know this because I've received hundreds of calls, hundreds of text messages, hundreds of emails. A lot of you did all three. And there's just a couple of things that I'd like to take the opportunity to say, because I too am very passionate about this, and I hope that my passion doesn't come off as anything other than very respectful. I've received communications that I'm obstructing the process, that we aren't investigating or willing to explore the state plan. I've received communications that the city has been pocketing money as if there's something nefarious going on, when those details have been in our financial reports, and this is the rebates have been implemented for decades. There was a comment made about us not valuing you, and my God, other than Dr. Negron and me, who are paid, the rest of the board members are volunteers. We deeply value everything that the teachers do for our kids. I see it firsthand every day with my kids in school. And we're killing ourselves to get more funding for our schools. It doesn't mean that we can't do more ourselves, too, but we are killing ourselves. No mayor in the state of Connecticut has done more to try to advocate for more funding for our public schools. I've raised taxes almost every year. Yeah, in large part to pay for increases to New Haven Public Schools that are more than any of my two recent predecessors have done. It doesn't mean that we can't do more, but we are trying very, very hard to fund things. Our budget is being gobbled up by pension and debt service payments because of past decisions that have been made. There was a reference to our budget surpluses we have put last several years. Significant portion of those budget surpluses, thanks to the support of the Board of Allors as well, into New Haven Public Schools. I want to talk specifically about healthcare, because there's been references to it's... The state plan is almost the same cost as the city plan. And while that may be true in isolation, we are self-insured, and with the exception of cafeteria workers, it's a small group of people that are on their own union-provided healthcare, every other city employee is on the healthcare that the teachers run. Every other city employee. And if we remove the teachers, who are the largest union, from that healthcare, it creates a significant imbalance in the overall self-insured system, which means that the risk profile changes and that the cost for our other... And I see people shaking their heads. I'm... We are doing the math to understand what we can afford. It's not like we're up here thinking, how can we trick the teachers? Just, you know, I listened quietly while everyone was speaking. We care about trying to work this out, but it is simply not affordable the way that it is outlined. And I know that doesn't make people happy, because people clearly deeply want the state plan. But we have had our consultants do the math, and it is unbelievably expensive for us to transition teachers to the self... To the state plan. None of us created this budget problem. There was a reference to the teachers saying, "You didn't create this budget problem." None of us created this budget problem. But we are in this budget problem, and we are trying to address it as best we can. I appreciate people pushing us to do more, but I hope that you also see our perspective of us trying to balance our ability to keep taxes in line, push other entities like Yale and the state to do more, and increase funding to New Haven Public Schools as best we can. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Ellicker.
Mr. Chair. Can I have a point of personal privilege?
Yes, Dr. Joyner.
I was glad to hear some history teachers get up and talk tonight, because they have a perspective that takes into account the chronological context of how public education has been treated in this country, as well as the current context that we're in. I can only speak for myself. I agree with everything that teachers said today, tonight, about the working conditions, because I was a teacher, and my identity now is teacher. A college professor is a teacher. I think that as a grandparent, great uncle, I see on a daily basis the consequences of how this country has treated public education. I'm a product of a separate and unequal school system. I'm sure people had problems in Russia, but my people have had problems in this country since sixteen nineteen and continue to have problems. There is no mystery about schools that are deprived and where they are and who attend them. That's a historical fact. If you're an elected official that represents this city, you have a moral responsibility to go to the governor's office and ask him why he's not getting back to people who write him. If you're an elected official in this city, whether you are a state senator or representative, you have a responsibility to organize and go to the governor's office and remind him that education is a creature of the state. It is absolutely sinful for an elected governor not to get back to a public school teacher. And I keep saying this over the ten years I've been on the board, that warm on grass office delights the crow. You have an election year coming up. The governor's going to come here and ask for your vote. He's going to smile at you, and he's going to probably give you all kinds of reasons why our roofs are leaking and our treads on our stairs are not being repaired. And as you agitate for change in the city, you should be critical thinkers enough to recognize that, as the mayor just said, we didn't create this problem, but we have a number of people that represent this city as a body that should be sitting down with Malloy and say to him, "Don't you dare come into New Haven unless you..." Malloy, I'm sorry. That's the one I didn't like as much. Lamont, Ned Lamont. To say to Ned Lamont, "Don't you dare come into the city and ask for our vote unless you're going to compensate us for the amount of money we need to give our teachers a fair contract." That should be our ask. Whatever the deficit is, when the mayor and Aldous come up with a budget, whatever's needed in order to raise our teachers to a level of decent standard of living and decent wages and healthcare, we should ask for that amount plus. Because if we don't, we're going to come back here every time we negotiate a contract and be fighting among ourselves for something that is our right. That's our money in Hartford. That's our money. That's not his money. And anytime you elect a miser as a public servant, that person's primary aim will be to try to build up the chest. It's your money. You've been penalized twice. You're paying taxes to a system that does not adequately fund your wages. Years ago, when I was in New York, people were talking about a particular president that gave rebates back to citizens. And I reminded the audience, "All he's doing is giving you a portion of what you sent there in the first place." So we do need to do a better job with facilities. We need to make sure that we have an urgency about roof repairs and all those other things. But if we keep fighting among ourselves and stop making... And don't make the demand where it can make a difference, we need to actually ask for the amount of money that will allow us to give you the insurance coverage you need, to give you the wages that you need, and to give you the resources so that you can work and breathe in healthy buildings. And so the same energy in this room has to be multiplied to organize every single teacher in this state, every paraprofessional in this state, every parent in this state to go to Hartford and say, "When you create your budget, make sure there's enough money in there to compensate for the fact that New Haven is being pimped, because people use our hospitals, they use our schools, they use our culture, they eat our pizza." And those people often come from places where they're... The burden of taxation for the city's not on them. So keep pressing us. I can handle it. I'm sure my board members can handle it. This is the best board we've ever had. Keep pressing us. But as you press us, let us together press the power that is responsible for this nonsense in the first place. That's all I ask. And I would remind you, when you talk about this board, these folks work at least twenty-five to thirty hours a week on weekends dealing with board business. And we're not up here for any type of great prestige or anything like that. We're here because we care about this community. We care about this country. We care about these children. And we should care enough that we can bind ourselves together in an effort to continue to press the city, but press the source of limited revenue for cities like ours. And you deserve a decent salary. I am who I am now because of the great teachers I had in North Carolina. There were black teachers who got less salary than their white counterparts. I went to a school that had less resources. I lived on the street that didn't have sewers, because even though my ancestry goes back to the Civil War in terms of service to this country, we fought on the front lines in war, and we were at the back of the bus in peacetime. And in many ways, teachers are like that. They're second-class citizens, and they're responsible for all the bounty that this country has and get the least amount of credit, particularly public school educators. So I applaud your energy. I applaud your ethics, but let's have a battle on several fronts at all times, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner.
I worked four jobs.
Yes.
Are we at a recess?
No, we're not at a recess. Thank you. Thank you all for participating tonight, and thank you for our board members for participating. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Thank you. It's moved by Ms. Downer. Is there a second? Thank you. It's been seconded by Dr. Joyner. Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Ms. Cologne is not here. Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion carries. Next on our agenda is the personnel report of Dr. Negron.
Good evening, board. I'm hereby asking for approval of the personnel report.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. That's been moved by Ms. Downer, second by Dr. Benitez. Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Next is the proposed twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven Board of Education Committee meetings.
Seconded.
Oh, and need a move first?
So move.
Okay, so thank you. It's moved. Thank you for participating. And seconded. Any discussion? We'll vote. Uh, Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner? Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Next is the Finance and Operations Committee. Mr. Wilcox?
All right. Thank you very much. Before we get started, as I always ask, does anybody need anything moved separately? We will be moving
Yes.
item five point zero one, uh, with United illuminating separately. Is there anything else we need?
Yes. Mayor Elicker?
Seven point one.
Yeah, can we move, just because it was requested for discussion, seven point zero one as well separately?
Yes.
All right. We'll go ahead and get started. Uh, first thing will be, I move that we approve item five point zero one with United illuminating.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing, seeing none. We'll vote. Uh, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Abstain.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Downer again?
Recuse.
Thank you. Recuse. Uh, Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well.
All right. Next, I move that we approve item seven point zero one, a data sharing agreement with Varsity Tutors.
Second? Uh, any discussion? Uh, Mayor Elicker?
You can go first, Mr. Chair, if you want.
Okay. Thank you. Um, yes, just trying to keep track of it. Um, so two things. One is the, the request for participating with Varsity Tutors comes from our schools, two schools. Um, and I also hear the concern raised about it. Uh, and my question for, uh, my, my thought is for us to postpone it, uh, table it, uh, for further discussion, uh, between the district and by F and O. Uh, but my question for the district is whether timing allows for that. Cause I'm not sure the school's particular plans for this, as it was brought forward by two schools.
There are no, um, noted implications, given that the intent was to begin using it at the end of January. So I do believe you still have another F and O and another Board of Education meeting.
Thank you. Mayor Elicker?
Uh, I think if there's an interest in delay, that's fine. I, I, rather than spending now learning about the program, because I don't know a lot of details, but you know, it felt like if there's concerns about it, that we should give it some time. So I would support that as well.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Joyner?
I, I think it would make sense to, uh, have, have, have our paid professionals, um, to take, take a look at it. Um, I have a high level of confidence in the members of Teaching and Learning Committee. Uh, and also, I also think that, that most districts are behind the research about what screen time is doing to kids. There's a lot of work being done at Yale Child Study Center now around that. And I think that, uh, we gotta catch up on that research. And I think some great points were made tonight about why we should be a little skeptical. And I have the highest degree of confidence in, in the leader of the TL Committee, uh, Ms. Red Hannan. And, um, she's also the cutting edge of some of this stuff on screen time and AI. And it might make sense, uh, for the superintendent to, you know, decide how she would deploy staff to take a look at it and the implications of it for our schools. And, and I would also argue that having worked with a lot of commercial entities that start out with no cost initially, uh, people aren't giving away stuff, so they're not just giving you those opportunities. Uh, there, there's always something at the end, or they're getting some benefit from it. So I, I think it's wise to do that. And then maybe we can discuss it in TNL or maybe superintendent can decide how she would do it so that we can get a report back to the board and, uh, make a decision.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, I would just say that if someone's going to make a motion to table this, I would request that Teaching and Learning Committee does take it up if there's a scheduled meeting between now and, um, the next F and O meeting, which will be the first Monday in January. Just because the concerns that have been raised, um, are more teaching and learning uh, in nature. And so would request if that's going to happen, that that committee takes it up. Definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Um, and I'm also interested in understanding more, uh, because the individual from the company did present to F and O. And my understanding is that there's also live instruction that is involved. Um, and I, I didn't hear that there is, uh, a particular high balance of AI contribution, uh, but rather the live tutoring, uh, that families can receive. I'll accept or if anybody wants to make a table.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Downer?
I want to make a motion to table seven point one, the data sharing agreement with Varsity Tutors for online learning platform that connects learners from all ages with the vast network of high-vetted subject matter experts for personalized instruction across thousands of subjects for students grade three through eight at, at East Rock School and Hill Central School from January sixth, twenty, s- twenty-six, January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-sixth to January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Downer. That's been, uh, the table's been moved by Ms. Downer, seconded by Dr. Joyner. This non-discussable is my understanding. Uh, we will vote. Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
No.
Dr. Benitez?
No.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
No.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So I think that's tabled. That's tabled. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Wilcox?
All right. Thank you. Now we'll make the main motion, and that is I move that we approve the one abstract, the remaining one agreement, the six purchase orders, the one contract, and the three change orders as listed on our agenda.
Second? Any discussion? We'll vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
No, um.
For F and O?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Next, our students' report. Mr. Ailey, you have something to say?
Yeah, I, yeah, I got some. Um, so for a social emotional learning program, we are having our first event tomorrow, December ninth, at five to seven thirty at East Rock, where we will be doing some activ-, some fun activities with some, I'm assuming, high schoolers are coming in. And there could be anyone, anyone's welcome. So I wish if y'all could come tomorrow, if you have time. Um, next, uh, I have, it's been sent an issue from ESUNs. I wasn't here last, last board meeting, so I'm not sure if this was, went over or not, but we'll just repeat, just in case. Um, there has been some issues with the student body trying to do some fundraisers, but apparently they're being told by the principal that they're not allowed to, um, sell or fundraise at all during the school time. From my understanding, I do know that there is like a time between when, uh, when it comes to the lunch wave and not competing with the lunch. Um, however, that timeline is only thirty minutes before and after. The district has put in for an hour before and hour after the lunch waves. Um, but even then, um, the selling is still incomplete because the principal is not allowing them to, um, proceed with their fundraisers. So I'd like to bring that issue up board, and if there's any opinions that we should discuss. Um, and last, um, last thing, we have been discussing the new trip to Hartford once more, estimated next year. Uh, my coordinator, I think, is working with you, Mayor Elicker. I'm not sure. They actually, all right. So it's estimated around next year. Hopefully, we can get up and say what, um, we need for our district. That's all I have for some reports.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ailey, um, for your notices and also the topics you raised. Any discussion? Okay. Thank you. And thank you for giving the dates, uh, for things. Next is our superintendent's report. Dr. Negron?
Thank you, President Yarborough. Um, as Dr. White gets me started with my presentation today, I did want to note that, uh, in order to accommodate the timeline of the item that we tabled, we'll make sure that we, um, revise the anticipated teaching and learning agenda so that that could be a conversation, so that that way it can then follow up to F and O during the first meeting, so that we're still on track.
Thank you.
Okay, so that adjustment will be, will be made. And with that, I am going to, uh, begin, um, tonight's presentation. In essence, this is where I'm going to share with your stakeholder engagement results from the Thought Exchange survey. Dr. White's going to be advancing the slides for me. So as we continue to focus on our path to excellence, today I will hone in on priority number four, operational efficiencies, especially as it relates to our second strategy, advocating for and aligning resources to achieve equity across our schools and programs. One of the ways in which we embark in this work this year is through our budget development process. It is guided by one central goal, to create a transparent process informed by stakeholders' perspective. We've begun by collecting input from the people we serve, which is our students, our families, and the community, as well as from our staff, our teachers, paraeducators, staff members, principals, assistant principals, and central office administrators through the Thought Exchange survey, which opened up on November twenty-first and closed on December second. We posed the following question as it relates to the budget development. What key factors should our district and community address together to advance achievement and equity for every student? I am extremely appreciative with the high engagement. We had a total of one thousand nine hundred and seven participants who offered a total of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-one thoughts. Here on this slide, you can see a breakdown of the participants. You will see that our students, families, and community comprise the majority of the survey participants, followed by our staff, meaning our teachers, principals, assistant principals, and paraeducators. All ideas and perspectives were summarized by the AI tool, Thought Exchange, to understand the essence of what is being shared by all of our participants. The responses emphasize the importance of piloting big-ticket items before entering into long-term contracts, enhancing mentorship and individual support for struggling students. As a collective, the participants urge us to consider fundraising as a way to increase the budget for school improvements. There were calls for smaller class sizes, additional career pathways, and improved teaching, teacher training in social emotional learning. There were also expressed concerns around bullying, equitable resource distribution, and better pay for teachers and staff. And as I imagine, we heard about the need to improve school facilities, food quality, technology access, and extracurricular opportunities. Although there are differences among all one thousand nine hundred and seven participants related to how funding should be allocated, with some prioritizing adequate staffing and teacher pay, while others prioritize school facilities and resources, there is common ground, all stressed in need for equity in the way resources are allocated. When analyzing all one thousand eight hundred and seventy, seventy-one thousand ideas, the, these are the themes that emerge. Um, Dr. White, if you go back one. Yeah. At the top is funding and resources, followed by staffing and compensation, followed by facility and environment, curriculum and instruction, and student support and engagement. I will now dive deeper into them. There is a concern over turnover rates of teachers due to inadequate salaries with suggestions to increase teacher pay to better recruit and keep high-quality staff. There's also a call for hiring more paraeducators for special education and for increasing the number of teachers to reduce class sizes. The community views proper staffing levels and competitive compensation as foundation to creating a stable, supported learning environment. The need for clean and well-maintained school facilities was frequently mentioned, expressing concerns about bathrooms, outdated technology, poor physical condition of buildings, leading to extreme temperatures and broken infrastructure. Many called for permanent fixes rather than the temporary solutions we're able to afford with limited funds. The need for flexible curriculum to meet different learning styles was also mentioned. Suggestions included integrating digital arts, improving science and math instruction, and offering diverse courses. I was happy to read that all participants expressed the importance of maintaining high academic standards and encouraging individualized support for struggling students. Investing in student support and engagement programs was heavily advocated, reflecting a desire to enhance both academic achievement and social emotional well-being. There were calls for mentorship programs, after-school activities, sports, clubs and resources that foster connections among students and staff, and an emphasis on addressing bullying, supporting the needs of special education students, and ensuring teachers are trained in social emotional learning. On slide twelve, we can see that ultimately, we, the staff of NHPS, are here to serve our students, to ensure they thrive and are empowered to flourish when they leave us. I took a close look at what our students had to say. You may recall from the participant breakdown that our students comprised fifty-one percent of all respondents. Their top priority is the school environment, followed by healthy nutrition, followed by equity and resources, bullying and behavior, and extracurricular activities. Although there were some differences among them with some with some emphasizing the importance of extracurricular activities, while others emphasize homework and free time, what they share in common is the fact that they want a balanced school experience, one that integrates diverse extracurricular activities and reasonable academic expectations, including manageable homework. There were numerous suggestions aimed at improving both the mental and physical conditions of educational settings. Our students expressed concerns about the cleanliness and maintenance of our facilities. They highlighted the need for respectful and welcoming spaces and the importance of having fair and attentive school staff who do not favor certain students. Healthy nutrition emerged as a significant concern, stressing the importance of improving the quality and the variety of food served in school. There is a strong demand for better food offerings, improved breakfast availability, and more culturally sensitive food choices. Our students highlighted the importance of equity in resource allocation within schools. Their suggestions range from providing equal access to basic school supplies, internet, and charging facilities. They also stress that students should be treated fairly by staff with specific mentions of addressing favoritism. They call for effective use of funds to repair and modernize school facilities. Many express frustrations with existing bullying dynamics, advocating for stronger preventative measures and consequences for inappropriate behavior. They, like me, want an environment where students feel safe, included, and heard, with emphasis on ensuring behavioral issues are addressed fairly by school authorities. Suggestions such, such as improving how school reacts to student misbehavior reflect the desire for increased understanding and empathy towards students who may struggle. Our students support the expansion of sports programs, clubs, and fun learning activities that can cater to diverse interests and foster engagement. They see it as a way to motivate students and help them find balance, countering stress and routine pressures. I also look closely at the ideas and thoughts from our families and community. They believe we should focus on ensuring accountability for learning outcomes, enhancing teacher retention, addressing classroom and resource needs, improve funding and creating safe and well-maintained facilities. They emphasize small class sizes, specialized support staff, including special education and counselors, lifting the importance of ensuring safety and promoting engagement through extracurricular activities. They want consistent communication with transparency in res- resource allocation as they believe this will strengthen community collaboration. Some express concern over current funding priorities, emphasizing the need for strategic use of limited funds, while others emphasize the importance of safe and well-maintained infrastructure, but regardless of which approach they prefer, both sides agree on the need for enhanced community collaboration to tackle educational challenges. They advocated for partnerships between schools, parents, and community organizations to address shared goals like student achievement and equity. The top theme for our families and communities is staffing and support, followed by facilities and infrastructure, followed by funding and resources, health and safety, and parent and community engagement. These responses highlight issues such as inadequate teacher retention and the need for more specialized staff. They believe that increasing support staff and improving working conditions can lead to better learning outcomes in a more stable educational environment. A prominent topic for our families and communities was the state of school facilities and infrastructure. They expressed concern over the condition of older school buildings, maintenance, and lack of certain facilities like sports amenities and sensory rooms. Funding and resource allocation were frequently mentioned with many advocating for reevaluating how funds are prioritized. They expressed frustration over perceived misallocation. The perception is that the strategic funding is required to address educational disparities, enhance academic offerings, and ensure a standard level of quality across all schools. They express concern for student well-being, both in terms of physical environment and social interactions, with calls for increased security measures to ensure a safe environment. They also pointed out the importance of mental health support and creating respectful school cultures. Participants emphasized the importance of engaging parents and community, highlighting open communication channels, regular meetings, and the inclusion of parents in decision-making processes. This is what our clientele is telling us. Again, our students, our parents, families, our community. I also took a close look at the thoughts from our NHPS staff, starting by first looking at our teachers, staff, and paraeducators. They highlighted several key areas such as improving compensation, advocating for higher pay to retain teachers, paraeducators, and support staff. There was a call for reduced class sizes for more personalized instruction and increased transparency and equity in resource allocation, budget management, and program distribution. They emphasized the need for comprehensive mental health support, updated technology, arts funding, and enhanced career training programs. They also named building maintenance and safety as critical. And I also took, took a close look at the thoughts from our administrative staff, our principals, assistant principals, and central office administrators. Key areas included improved school facilities, equitable resource allocation, staffing to support individualized learning, and enhanced mental health services, emphasizing the finding and addressing inequities within school systems, especially special education and multilingual learners. There are calls for clear communication, consistent professional learning, focus on skill deficits, and integrating technology with additional suggestions, including improved school meals, discipline policies, extending school hours, and enhancing family engagement. This diverse stakeholder perspective, I wanna reiterate, this diverse stakeholder perspective, all one thousand nine hundred and seven of them will be leveraged, as you heard me summarize, as we work towards a transparent budget development process to ultimately achieve equity across all of our schools, not some with the limited funds that we do have. We will be focusing on three key initiatives. First, focus budget conversations with our schools and departments to gather initial input and better understand specific needs. Those conversations have already begun. Ongoing input collection through thought exchange and community conversations. There will be six convenings strategically held across the city at the end of January as to give everyone access. And finally, we, as an entire community, have to increase and strengthen our school funding advocacy efforts both locally, locally, and at the state level. Our students deserve equitable access to the promise of public education. We intend to be an open book, thus highlighting transparency, looking to be able to publish once a budget is built, u- utilizing not only the feedback of some, but the feedback of all, as you are seeing through the survey feedback that I just summarized for you today, so that we can lift the priority as a community. But we will continue to do so with the revenue that we do have. We cannot do things without revenue. We want everything, and I'm sure you agree with me, that you heard in public comment today. We want all of that and more because our teachers and our staff deserve that. Our students deserve that. All of our NHPS staff deserve that, inclusive of our supervisors and our administrators. All of us deserve that. But we have only but one revenue that we have to consider and that we have to ensure that we are putting a budget together that addresses what the entire community is saying should be our priority. I was delighted to read the, the input, delighted to look at the summary because I do feel that it is aligned with our path to excellence. You can break down all four priorities, look at the work that you have heard me speak about in these last, uh, more than two years. We are on the right path, and I think the survey validates that we are on the right path. But we have to continue to identify and expand on our revenue because without revenue, it is going to continue to be a struggle. And I agree, this is not the time to be pointing fingers because we all want the same thing. We have to continue to work together to do right by all of our students who attend NHPS. And with that, I open it up for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Nagron. Uh, any discussion? Uh, Dr. Joyner, then Mr. Wilcox, then Mr. Ailey.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Nagron. I, I think that report summarizes what many of us know uh, about the reality of what we're dealing with. Um, I'd like to comment on three things quickly regarding it and um, ask the board to consider, one of the things I'm gonna say about using public comment to attack certain other educators in the system. Um, I almost called a point of, point of order, and I'm sorry that room has emptied because I wanted the people in here to hear that. Uh, we don't help ourselves by attacking our central office staff. Uh, we're understaffed, uh, particularly in a, 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 a number of departments, but almost every department. And each one of our assistant superintendents supervises a number of schools that's larger than the average school district in the state. And those are facts, and it, it's, it's not good for them to sit up here every meeting and hear. Some people talk about if we didn't have these administrators, we can do this for teachers. That, that's, it's not even rational, it's not even mathematically accurate. So I would hope that in the future, that we would ask, uh, public commentators to not attack other educators. Uh, anybody that's administrator was a teacher first. And most take that mindset, at least the good ones, take that mindset up through uh, superintendency or even board members. So I, so I would hope that we would make that clear, that uh, this is not a place where people come in, come to be whipping boys or girls or whatever. Uh, the question of academic freedom, uh, New Haven might be the most liberal s- school district in the country with regard to that. Uh, but academic fre- freedom is not just a province of school board, it's a state issue. And, and most good school districts, if something is highly controversial, it has to go through a committee of parents, teachers, and educators, uh, if someone wants to teach that or whatever. And you also have to get parental permissions for certain kinds of things that are considered controversial. And I think our policy either covers that or we're certainly in a position to cover it. There's some pretty high standards that we should. I had a conversation with Ms. Redhannan a couple of weeks ago uh, about this, and I said, you know, when, when people talk of academic freedom, give me an example of what they're talking about. Now, what is it that you wanna teach that you think you, that might be controversial? Because what's controversial in Haven is not contro- i- is, is, is not controversial in, well, no, no, what's contro- controversial in Tallahassee, Florida is not controversial in New Haven. What's controversial in Austin, Texas is not controversial in New Haven. And um, the First Amendment guarantees certain rights, uh, but there are some things that are sensitive that parents should be consulted on if people wanna teach, uh, their children. A good example would be some of the language that Mark Twain uses in his, his, uh, he's using N-word. And it was a big controversy a few years ago in the district when there were children in a middle school class who objected to that. And the teacher in question felt that, you know, that, that her academic freedom, she should be allowed to teach it. Uh, which means that she was tone deaf to what that word means to certain people. The other part is that even in, in the face of, of inadequate resources, we still have to pay attention to operational efficiencies and look across the district at different departments, classrooms, schools, and whatever to make sure that we are getting the most out of the money that we have. And there's one particular place that the superintendent and I have talked about that I won't name. But there are some, there are some places in the system where we could be more efficient, uh, in terms of staff to student ratio, uh, in terms of, uh, student attendance, and in terms of whether or not even a building in our district uh, is necessary, uh, uh, whether or not the programs offered there could be spread throughout the system. So I think that's something we need to look at as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to say real quick, thank you for the presentation and um, just request that if it's not already been posted, that it gets added to the meeting materials for tonight's meeting so I can take another look at it. I imagine others might like to as well. Um, did wanna thank you for, uh, presenting the analysis of it. I think this is a great first step using this tool to get, uh, you know, almost, uh, well, more than a thousand, well over a thousand, um, people responding, et cetera. So um, I, I'm hoping we can continue to do that. I know that's your plan. I would request that the next things that go out would be something financial related specifically, perhaps in an area of positive and maybe negative, which would be what cost savings ideas do people have? Sometimes people closer to some of the issues in a building might have some ideas from a different perspective than what we might see, you know, from a board perspective. Uh, and then also to get at that perceived areas of financial uh, where we're wasting money for lack of a better way of putting it, but just to kind of get some comments on that, because from that we would be able to prepare reports or look at things to go, okay, if people think this is a problem, let's see if it's really a problem, and if not, let's explain why it is not as people are perceiving. Uh, that's one way to keep perception from becoming reality. So, finally, I did wanna thank you for talking about the next budget cycle in terms of the, the highly, uh, or the much more increased, um, number of budget forums and discussions that are gonna be happening in January, more than there's been since I've been on the board, uh, are being planned. And then also that reminder about the funds is, is we like to sometimes remind folks, we are legally not allowed to spend a dollar that has not been allocated. that has not been allocated to us by the city through the Alders. And the Alders are not able to allocate funds when they're not equitably allocated in the state by updating their budget formulas and deciding that a New Haven student is as worthy of an education as a student in some of the much more wealthier communities, or even the state average, or even Hartford's per pupil. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Mr. Ailey?
I wanted to thank you, Ms. Negron, for the presentation today. And I just wanted to add on top of that. So my job is to, of course, put a student voice first, help out, fix any issues that they're having. I'm doing a lot more than that. That's not my only title. That's like a mean title that I do. But I try to expand opportunities for students, whether it's a free program, whether I'm teaching it. And yes, I literally took money out of my own pocket to get teaching materials, so I can help students learn coding. I can help students learn how to use AI. I can help students know how to use it correctly. And especially because in this coming weeks, I'm starting a program at my own school, which, again, helps you learn all of those things out of my own pocket. I paid for the materials, because I want more people to know knowledge. And I want to expand that. And I have expanded it. And I just wanted to thank you for the awesome work that you have been doing so far. That's pretty much it that I'll have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ailey. Mr. Waters?
Dr. Negron, I also would like to express my appreciation for this process that you've taken to gather the opinions of so many different stakeholders in your planning. I think it's important that the values of our community be represented in how we spend our money and what priorities we set. I think it's a very good move. And in that same venue, in wanting to hear opinions and the values of our community expressed, I'd like to just take a moment to respond to to the idea of being stricter with public comments. I would like to caution us against that. I would really like us to be able to hear what people have to say, even if perhaps not everything they say is fully informed. I genuinely believe that the vast majority of the people that come here to speak to us, you know, do so earnestly. And I don't think their intention is to attack or to hurt anybody on the board. And I, yes, I think that it can be a good opportunity for us to hear what's going out there and also to gauge misinformation that might be out there. So I think, you know, Doc, how much respect I have for you and for your sense of fairness, which I appreciate and applaud. But I'd also like, just to caution us to maybe err on the side of listening rather than shutting people down.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Just a couple of thoughts. One, I'm grateful for the district using the tools at our disposal to not only collect input, but synthesize it, try to understand it, see where it aligns with what we are already doing, see what we may need to do more of or less of. And I hear and support the comments that have been made so far. You know, particular thanks to the hundreds of staff members who responded and also the 430 parents and the 920 students. It's very important to hear voices in some robust measure. And the more that could participate, the better, because everyone's input is important. There are a couple of things that stuck out about... There are a couple of things out of what was mentioned that stuck out to me that I want to learn more about. And just a few of them. One was the... The sensory realms, the favoritism, the empathy for students who struggle, things that are not necessarily fixed with a budget, but are just as important for how we interact in this district. And so thank you very much for you and the team just doing this work and playing a leading role in this. And Mr. Ailey, one thought that I had as you were talking, speaking about doing more, more than just kind of hearing or facilitating responses and comments between students. And I agree, like, in addition to being just a conduit of thoughts, I think that you are recognizing, acknowledging that you are a leader, that you have influence, that things change when you are involved. And change definitely costs. And I appreciate just your awareness of what it takes to see the things important to you come to pass and what it takes to move the needle on things. So I respect your observation of that. I feel some of your pain and struggle as you were just describing what you're doing. And, you know, I want to highlight just the leadership aspect of it. Because different from thought exchange, which is a tool that just processes or hears or collects and distributes information, you're actually catalyzing change, which is something leaders do and something the best of us pray and hope we can do because it's needed. Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
I appreciate what everybody is saying. I think you all have made good points. I have a question about how this report has been shared with staff, parents, students, and how aware people are if they didn't participate, because maybe they didn't see the email or they didn't think it was important. How aware are they that they were perhaps able to add to the process of building a budget? And perhaps feel that the process is transparent if they were aware of what's happening, how is happening? So, I mean, besides the report, it will be a good thing. And I don't mean to tell you what agenda to build for your principals. But maybe it'd be a good thing for principals to share this information and to discuss with teachers and with staff how impactful it is for them to be involved in addressing this kind of engagement that you're trying to create. Also, it will be a good thing to... And you might have done this, Dr. Negron, to explain what is the framework. We are doing thought exchange within a bigger picture. And maybe they have not seen that bigger picture, because it's something that is remote to them. So I'm just saying, perhaps, because some of the comments tonight were, oh, we don't have a transparent process. How more transparent can it be that you can say what you need and what is not working? But apparently, it's not enough. And I think it's because there's no clear understanding on how what you're trying to do fits into building that budget. And I might be wrong. I'm just here thinking about the efforts that you are making to have the community be engaged and give you clear... I mean, there's no wrong answer to this thought exchange opportunity. Yet, we have a sector of our community that says that we do not have a transparent process. So it's just food for thought. I think at a governance meeting, and I might invite all board members to a governance meeting, we could discuss more about this concern about public comment. I do believe that we have the skin to take whatever comes through those microphones. Trust me, I've been called worse things in my life, so it's okay. But I think it'd be a good discussion at governance if that's a concern. I also think that we need to remember that governance is not only to pass policy, but it's also for us to help the board to understand how they can impact processes that go between the administration and us so that we can be a team of eight that is truly understanding our power. And our power only lies when we're all together, understanding, having the same understanding, not agreeing on how we see the same understanding, but having the same understanding. So it's something that perhaps we can discuss at a governance meeting, and we can invite everybody to it. Otherwise, I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez, and thank you for leading and offering governance. Dr. Negron?
Yes, I wanted to answer some of the questions that I heard Dr. Benitez surface. So to answer your question, how has it been shared? But let me back up, right? So we wanted to encourage participation. And at first, we just ended up doing it through our email, through a platform, to invite, again, anybody that's inside of the system. But that's why, I think it was through the last board meeting when I said it publicly, and I encouraged people to participate, that we saw the number of participants, it just skyrocketed, right? It just served as a reminder to people to engage. Also, placing it right in our portal on the website, right there as soon as you open it, I think it made it easy for people to engage. And I know that at our schools, our leaders continue to encourage students to participate. So I think that proved as a strategy to get their voices. In terms of sharing what we found, again, I know that I like to bring you everything first as my board. But we did at the last superintendent's meeting, which happened at the beginning of the month last week, I did take an opportunity to give all the administrators the summary in terms of all, right? As I began today with the all. And then I also gave them their own summary in terms of administrators, so they could see the difference that was surfacing between, among all of them. So that was a presentation that was given. What we will do tonight is we will link this presentation to Board Docs so that, again, it becomes available to everybody to be able to hear exactly and see what I provided you tonight. As CFO Hernandez and I begin to engage through those community forums, actually before, like right now, the reason I wanted our administrators to know the feedback is because they began to do their school budget conversations with the CFO. So they had all this feedback, right? Before they had those conversations. I thought that that was important for them to have it. As we engage in the community conversations, I want to be able, as we speak, to say, and this is what we heard you say. Right? So I can't, I'm not going to speak about my assumptions. I think this is a good size. The fact that I have 1,000, almost 2,000 people from all these stakeholders, then I can ground everything and say, this is what we heard you say. This is how we are responding to what we heard you say. And also knowing that this is not the last thought exchange that they are going to get, because we are going to continue to leverage it so that it becomes almost like a conversation, a dialogue, right? So we can continue to put things out and get feedback from them. So all of that, just to sort of like answer your question around how are we using it? How do we intend to use it? And hopefully now, people are hearing me talk about this tonight. So the next time you hear, hey, here's this quick survey, please complete it, because we actually take the time to listen and hear what you are saying. I want to remind folks, when I came onto the seat, I said through my entry process that I intended, number one, to listen. Not make assumptions, but listen and be guided by what I hear, so that it can inform our work. So your voice continues to inform the progress that we are making on the path to excellence and remind everybody that we co-created that, because we use thought exchange to hear from folks about what we should be prioritizing and thus our path to excellence.
Thank you, Dr. Negron. Dr. Joyner?
First of all, thank you for saying that, because I think what we're doing is institutionalizing a process that is really necessary to have a democratic dialogue. Regarding public comment, I was impressed by something that Viktor Franco said about the United States. He said, you have a statue of liberty, but you should also have a statue of responsibility. And I really believe that anybody that makes a public comment to a body like this should be responsible enough to, one, determine whether or not they're telling the truth; two, to determine whether or not it's actually harming someone; and to also treat the people at the end of their criticism the same way they would want to be treated. So I can't go into any labor meeting and criticize unjustly. Well, I can't. They don't offer public comment in their meetings. But I can't do that. And so the reason I advocate for all of our staff is because I think that anybody that comes here has a responsibility to treat the people in this room the way that they would want to be treated, the way they want their parents to be treated, the way they want their children to be treated. And to recognize that we're all in this together. We might have different ranks and titles and whatever, but we're all trying to do the good work of educating the children in this community. And I have so much respect for Mr. Suarez, and I hear what he's saying. I don't think we'd be board members if we didn't have thick skin. But quite frankly, it's also helpful for us to hear, comment, and we can say that it's truthful, it's accurate, and there was no intent to harm. Unfortunately, over 10 years I've been on the board, I've seen deliberate and willful attempts to use public comment to attack people, to diminish people. And I don't think we should allow that. But I hear what Mr. Suarez says. And that's why I didn't object to some things that were said tonight that I thought were inappropriate. I just kept my peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Thank you for your report, Dr. Negron. There's no president's report for tonight. Any discussion? Next, our teaching and learning report and facilities naming report.
No report for either committee. We will have our meeting before the end of this year. And we don't have a report at this time. However, on the 18th of December, there is a dedication ceremony at Hill House High School to name the floor after two giants in our city, one who's alive and well, Robert LaMell, and another who's deceased, Salvatore Vertoram. And it's going to be at Hill House High School for the first game of the season, cross girls, cross boys, cross Hill House boys, Hill House girls. And there's a luncheon at 11 o'clock. And there's a luncheon at 11 o'clock, I believe, that is for the family that will be held at the Fair, it's by invitation, unfortunately.
Thank you very much, Dr. Negron. Thank you very much, Dr. Joyner.
My alter ego.
Any discussion? Thank you. Head Start Report, Citywide School Building Committee Report, and Finance and Operations Report. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, thank you. These will be brief because Head Start and Citywide has not met since our last meeting. The Head Start is a week from this Thursday, and Citywide should be this Thursday. And as far as finance and operations go, in addition to the action items, we did we did talk about Dr. Benitez's suggestion that we have more FNO-related presentations for full board in full board meetings, so we did discuss that. And I think that we will have some of those coming up. And so thank you for those suggestions. We also had an update on the budget process for next year from our CFO, Mr. Hernandez, who did talk about how things are going to date. They're at the stage now where he's received school budgets and is receiving departmental budgets as they start to pull together all the information needed to put together the district's budget and to have the public discussions, forums, et cetera, that'll be happening as they prepare the budget. So happy to answer any questions. Oh, and the final thing I did forget because I said I would do this, but we did vote to send to Governance Committee an updated to the data sharing policy. I left that meeting, went directly to a long negotiation session, and forgot to do that. So I am sorry, and I will do that tomorrow morning. If anybody really wants to see it, it is posted in the FNO meeting materials. So but that'll be coming up tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion? Thank you. Governance Report, Dr. Benitez.
Yes, I would like, good evening, board members and members of the public. Before I proceed, I would like Ms. Downer to give us a report on the last governance meeting, and then I'll proceed.
Thank you, Dr. B. We met on December 4th. The team reviewed and shared the shared table policy and updated the language to the bullying policy, which will be ready for the first reading for our next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Downer. Oh, any questions?
I'm all set. Any questions?
I do have one. What exactly is the update on the shared table policy?
So the shared table policy will will be reviewed in the Food Service Task Force. So we we didn't make an update. We had some questions.
Oh, all right. No, I didn't get any questions sent, and I didn't even get a Zoom meeting where the actual governance meeting. So if you could send me.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Wait, hold on. You did not get invitation to governance? You, okay. So what you need to do whenever we say we're discussing an item that you're interested, you need to get in touch with Ms. Jackson or they're posted for dates and all that. And we did discuss it at the last board meeting that we had to change the date. But if you have any questions prior to meetings, you can always contact me. Besides that, the reason why we had to go back, it was a concern about, I I was not at the meeting, but I always read everything. The the committee was concerned about the necessary language on food allergies, refrigeration, and items that have to do more with compliance with food handling, which is something that, of course, is not in our purview. It's in the purview of the people who handle our food. So we had to send it back to that team. But one thing that I would recommend recommend is that whenever any of us want to do some, want to work on policy, we we must work with a committee that has the members that can provide you with the right guidance. And that's why we send it back to the food service people. And the chair for that is Dr. Yarborough. So if you have any specific questions, Dr. Yarborough can let you know when they will be meeting and how you could participate with that. In any case, because your concerns are as broad as anything that has to do with school and children and the life of of what we do on a regular day, I would recommend that if you ever have a policy that you want to work with and you're not clear about what committee should be the committee that you work with, you talk to me and I will make sure that I advise you to the right committee.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. No more questions.
Thank you. I just wanted to make, I'm sorry, any other questions? I I want to make two points. Okay. So one of the things that I heard tonight is that we should make a right for people. We don't make laws. Board of Education is it's dependent on the laws of the state of Connecticut, and we create public policy, and that's what we do. Any one of us who would like to start creating laws, I suggest you go move to the legislature. That's a great idea. I'm not interested in running for office like other people, but it is something that we must keep clear. We create public policy, legislators write laws. The other thing that I wanted to raise is that I am extremely concerned that we are having difficulty accepting a recommendation from a committee because resources pollute the environment. I am all against pollution. I think pollution, it is a bad thing. But I am concerned that we are talking about pollution in isolated cases and not thinking about what we, how what we vote impacts the work and the services to kids. And I'm not saying that I feel great about voting for the item today. We've had these discussions about other things. My only concern is that we, when we consider items, and again, I go back to what I said before, if an FNO, a concern comes up about pollution, that should be discussed there. And by the time we come, we should be clear about the answers to that question. Same thing with data sharing. All of these things, and and now I'm speaking to you as the chair for governance. If we're going to have processes, we have to follow the processes. We have FNO for the committee to have the discussions, deep discussions. And and I I hate to do this to the FNO people, but that's where the deep discussions need to happen. Because when we come to the board meeting, it should be more on answering questions that were already raised and that you have answers for because they were raised as at FNO. I just want us to keep working on making the processes at committee level streamlined to the point that when we come to a board meeting, we have many committees informing, many people informing. We could be talking for for four, six hours if instead of doing the deep work at committee, we do it at the board meeting. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be having discussions that we might want to have publicly on these items. But perhaps if the committee members have those discussions, do the research, and come well informed to the meeting, and I'm talking about us, Board of Ed, not talking about the public, us informed well so that when we vote no or yes, we know exactly what we are voting for and and why. And not to raise questions when when we're here because it's not here. It's a committee that we have that space to raise questions. Again, I'm not saying we cannot raise questions. I'm just saying, let us be mindful of the committee work that we have to do and the Board of Ed meeting work that we have to do. That's all I have for today.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Thank you, Ms. Downer. Any discussion?
I think there's a there's a point to be made about that. Perhaps the discussion about varsity should have been held in teaching and learning because it's really an academic program. And I think in order for us to make this process more effective, we have to make sure that that goes to the right committee. And in 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 some years past, we've had, it was very clear that if it infringes on teaching and learning, that that part of it is discussed in T and L. And actually, Ms. Redhanna used to generate the agenda and would have vendors or pro proposals. That's what she did with textbook adoption, all those other things. And I just think it was not necessarily deliberate, but it happens, unfortunately. That's the imperfection of democratic dialogue. But if we can make sure that the topic is suitable for that particular committee, then we have a better chance of coming to the meeting with knowing that it it has been vetted and discussed. And even 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 with that, we still will make mistakes. But we're making mistakes because we're trying to do the right thing, and we're not trying to cover up anything. So in some ways, this was a good thing tonight. We heard different information, and we decided not to eliminate it, but to postpone it until we got better information. And anytime you're on a trip and you figure out that GPS is not accurate, you say, oh, let me stop, let me turn around. That's what we did. And I hope that we can continue to do that in order to make this this a more perfect union, so to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Mr. Wilcox?
Just as a follow-up, just like to remind everybody that the Finance and Operations Committee agendas are posted typically the Friday before the Monday meeting. The next meeting will not be until the first Monday in January, so that information will be posted before staff goes on holiday break. So there should be plenty of time if people wish to review the agenda. And this is for our members of public as well. If people have questions, please get it to the committee. We are happy to get into it. And if people think something is more appropriate in another committee, we're happy to refer it over there or to ask the administration to have those conversations with those committees. So but that's just my reminder that I typically put out there periodically. That's the agendas, and we are always happy to have questions from any member of the public, any member from the board, any member from the staff as we work to make things and to make sure all those questions are answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Downer, thank you, Mr. Wilcox.
I I just want to say that I was in the FNO meeting, but I also want to say that we're not perfect. You know, you can get new information all the time and things change. I'm here because I respect what we do, but I also respect our teachers. You know, our president came forth and she delivered some information. She wasn't able to deliver it. But it changed the outcome tonight, and I'm standing on it. So I could have been in the meeting, but you get new information all the time, and we had time. So that's why I did what I did, and I'm not reversing it. Sorry. But we got to have a little grace when you receive new information. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downer. Thank you for all the insights. Next, the Food Service Task Group. We have a meeting coming up this Thursday, so there's no report for that. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved second.
It's been moved, seconded. Dr. Joyner? Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.